Good evening. I would like to call this Planning Commission meeting of November 12th, 2019, to order. Will you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, equal and representative states.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, will you please call, roll?
Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Conno.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to go through some meeting protocols. I would like to review the process for public hearing so everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide an oral report and answer questions from the commission. A public hearing will be opened. The applicant will make the presentation. There will be limited to fifteen minutes. Members of the public can then speak. Each individual will have three minutes. Designated speakers can be limited to ten minutes. The applicant will be given an opportunity to respond to the comments made by the audience, limited to five minutes. The planning, the public hearing will then be closed. Discussion will return to the commission for formal action taken to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions with regards to your comments. Please state your name and address. State whether you support or oppose, or are neutral on the proposal. Your statement should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Avoid gossip, emotion, and repetition. A clear, concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. Now we'll go to public comments. Does anyone at this point in time have any public comments on non-agenda items? Do we have any cards? Okay, hearing none. We'll close public comments and we'll go to the consent calendar. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
So move.
Any discussion? Any changes?
No.
Okay, thank, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Are we okay?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on to the business calendar. The formal action of the Planning Commission shall become effective after the ten-day appeal period, unless the City Council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then the formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and a decision by the City Council. An appro, an appeal from the decision or requirement of the Planning Commission shall be filed with the Clerk of the Council and a copy sent to the Planning Department within ten working d, within ten days of the date of the commission's actions. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. We'll now move on to the public hearings. This is the time and place to consider item number one. Conditional use permit number 2019-32 for the project located at 128 West MacArthur Boulevard. Remember, decisions on this matter are final unless appealed within ten days of the individual group. Does any of the commissioners have anything to disclose with regards to this item? Okay. Yours.
Good evening Chairman and members of the Plan Commission. This item is on conditional use permit number 2019-32, which was filed by the business owner of Raphael's Pizza to allow the operation of a type forty-one beer and wine on sale, ABC license at 128 West MacArthur Boulevard. As stated, the request is to allow the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption at an existing Pixaria that's been established since the nineteen seventies. At this time, no proposes or proposed changes are proposed to the site nor the tenant suite. The loc, location of the subject unit is located with an integrated shopping center at the southeast west corner of MacArthur and Main Place. The commercial shopping center has various commercial uses from a market to other restaurants as well as some retail uses. To the south and the west of the property, we do have some single-family homes. And to the north as well. And then to the northeast and southeast of the property, there are multifamily residential developments. The site is highlighted in red and then the subject unit is somewhere in the middle of the commercial development, which is highlighted in blue for you. This is the floor plan of the current layout of the actual business. It's approximately twelve hundred square feet, which allows about twenty-four to twenty-eight patrons. The areas in red highlight the proposed display area as well as the storage area for beer and wine. Combined, this equates to about fifty square feet, which is way below the allowed square footage per the San Ana subway code. As previously mentioned, the Pixaria has been established there since the nineteen seventies and it has changed ownerships over the years. The project will provide an added service to the residents as well as to the visitors of the areas. And the conditions of approvals being proposed will ensure that the project doesn't deviate from the planned operations and as well will mitigate any potential impacts. The business will operate from eleven AM to ten PM Monday through Sunday. If they, for some reason, in the future want to allow for after-hours, they'll come back to this body for an approval of CUP for after-hours. In addition to that, we are requesting that a property management maintenance agreement be implemented to ensure that the property is maintained at all times. And with that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit number twenty, twenty nineteen dash thirty-two S. Conditioned. Feel free to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jerry. Does the commission have any questions of staff?
I just want to ask for my own clarification. So in the beginning of the staff report, it states that the business is going to be open until ten eight, um, ten PM?
Correct.
So the hours in the recommended action, is that only there eight to midnight? And if they want to extend, then they have to come back and ask for the extension?
That is correct. So our code allows business to operate from eight to midnight without a conditional use permit for after-hours. So in the future, if they do want to exceed twelve AM till two AM, potentially they will have to come back to this body and get that approved.
So is it now it stays the same?
That is correct. Right now, they're only proposing to operate from eleven AM to ten PM.
What, what the business opening hour, opera, business hours from?
Eleven AM to ten PM, Monday through Sunday.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Eleven AM to ten PM, Monday through Sunday.
Okay, so why they want to apply for the ABC license from eight AM to twelve AM?
They're, they're not requesting that. So our code allows a business to operate from eight AM to twelve AM without a conditioning's permit for after-hours. So that condition is kind of stated in there for transparency purposes as well as to inform the applicant that they cannot operate past those hours. If they do decide in the future to operate past those hours, they will have to come back and get a CUP approved for after-hours.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jerry? Thank you, Jerry.
Then the business owner is also present in case you may have any operational questions.
Madam Secretary, have we received any communications on this item?
We have and they are posted on our website.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Only if you have any questions.
Only if we have any questions?
Yes.
You have nothing to say at all?
The establishment's, sorry, my name is Lillian Hunane. I'm the owner of Raphael's Pizza.
There you go.
Um, the location's been there for about thirty years, but I am the on, the current owner for the past one year. So we've been there as new owners for the past year.
Okay.
So other than that, we're a local establishment. We, our clientele consists of two. During the day, we have the local commercial people that work in the local areas. And at night, it's usually families that bring in their kids. So we're not looking to create any nuisance in the area. We're actually looking to just establish more of a connection with our community.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant?
Uh, no, just what caused you to apply for this license at this point?
Um, the ownership, when we changed it, one of the, one of the questions was, how can we increase revenue? And over the past years, he's, he's gotten to know a lot of his customers. And one of the things would, was always, you know, people who want to come and watch the game, and we have a television, but when they want to, want, watch the game, they want a beer, two beers, you know, kind of like the mom and the dad or something, or a group of guys. But because our facility or our restaurant's only about twenty-eight maximum people, where, you know, that's not a lot. So that's why we're trying to just increase revenue. And that was one of the ways.
And there's no formal, formal entertainment at this point in time or anything like that?
No, other than a television that we just have usually like football or soccer playing, that's it.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input.
Thank you.
I don't have any requests for speaking cards on this item at this point in time? Madam Secretary, correct? Okay, so is there anyone at this point that would like to say anything on this item? Hearing them, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Go ahead, you can go with your comment.
I'd like to have a motion to approve the conditional unit permit number 2019-32 S. Conditioned.
Second.
Okay, second.
Second.
Felix, you have any comments you want to make or any?
Nope, I was gonna make the same motion.
Any other comments from the commission at this point? Okay, hearing them, we'll have, we'll have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Motion passes. Okay, now's the time and place for item number two. Conditional use permits numbers 2019-33, 2019-34, and 2019-35 for the project located at sixteen oh two East First Street. Please make sure you understand that the decision on this matter, unless appealed within ten days by any interested party. If you wish to address the Planning Commission at this point in time, please fill out a speaker card. Do any of the commissioners have anything to disclose at this point in time with regards to this item? No? All right, Selena, your presentation.
Good evening Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight before you, we have three conditional use permits. The first one would be in regards to allowing a conditional use permit, or in regards to a conditional use permit for a banquet facility. The second is a conditional use permit for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. And the third is a conditional use permit to allow the banquet, um, oh, I'm sorry, the alcohol sales to operate until one AM, when the banquet facility is in use. The subject site is at sixteen oh two East First Street. It's within a general commercial zone and general commercial, general plan designation. The adjacent property uses to the east and west are within a commercial zone. They are exist, one's an existing office building with religious facility to the west and to the east is an existing religious facility. To the south is zoned open space and it's the Santa Ana Unified School District offices and to the north are commercial uses. Here's the site plan for the subject property. It shows the site. It's all one site with sixteen hundred East First Street. You may remember this from two thousand and seven, where there was a conditional use permit issued for the existing Holiday Inn Hotel on the site. And it also included on the site plan, the existing restaurant building at sixteen oh two East First. Here are some pictures of the restaurant building. The top one is a view from First Street. Where you can see the materials will match the existing hotel building. The non-conforming sign that you see in the picture there will be removed with a condition of approval for the entitlements. And the picture, image on the bottom is a picture from the interior of the site, where you would see the main entrance of the restaurant and banquet hall facilities, which would be from the interior. Here you see the floor plan for the full banquet and restaurant facility use. The portion, the primary use of the building would be for a restaurant. It's an eleven thousand, existing eleven thousand square foot building. The restaurant would be open from twelve PM to seven PM on Mondays through Friday. And when the banquet, and when the banquet facility is not in use. When the banquet, the banquet facility is proposed to be on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from five PM to one AM, which would be exclusively for rental purposes close to the public. Interior tenant improvements will be made to create this configuration that you see here, to create dining rooms, restrooms, the kitchen, bar, and office and storage rooms to make it used for the proposed tenant. There are no outdoor dining oper, or operations proposed for this facility. And the alcoholic beverages would be stored in a walk-in cooler, which is less than five percent of the floor area, which is required by the code. The conditional use permit for the banquet facilities is, again, banquet use proposed only on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from five PM to one AM. Operational standards in regards to any banquet facility that operates in the city are standard to require a kitchen, restroom facilities, a licensed secure, one licensed security guard for every one hundred people in attendance, and exterior lighting that meets the building code, that building safety requirements of the police department. An entertainment permit is also required and is included as one of the conditions of approval. Entertainment permits are necessary when there are music such as DJs that would be operational on the site in relation to, in addition to the existing restaurant operations and banquet operations. And other things to note is that this facility is within the commercial zone and banquet uses are typical, typical of hotel uses. So it's not uncommon for us to see a new hotel with a banquet hall within it, restaurant within it, these types of uses on the site. This is just a detached building that would now be activated with a banquet use. In regards to alcohol sales, any establishment within the city selling, selling alcoholic beverages would be, is required to obtain a CUP. This CUP in particular would allow for beer, wine, and distilled spirits for on-premise consumption. The police department has reviewed the application and has no objections to granting the CUP for the slice, for alcohol sales. And there are several operational standards for on-sale establishments that would apply to this facility like any other facility in the city. In regards to after-hours operations, this is required for establishments serving alcoholic beverages after midnight. This, in particular, the applicant is asking for the sale of alcoholic beverages until one AM on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Although they've indicated that the majority of the banquet events proposed to end prior to midnight, but in some cases rentals are until one AM. There are also operational standards in regards to the entertainment permit and alcohol sales that would overlap and apply to after-hours operations. So with that, the CUPs are not going to be detrimental to health, safety, or welfare of the community. Some operational standards to highlight that I mentioned before that will mitigate potential impacts created by the uses. No audible music within twenty feet of any direction of the facility. A security plan approved by the police department. Security guards, one per every one hundred attendees. Closed-circuit television monitoring, maintenance of an incident log, no loitering policies, and alternative transportation plans. The CUPs are typical for ban, again, typical for banquet uses and will allow the business to remain competitive. There are other banquet facilities in the city that have these same entitlements for alcohol sales and after-hours operations. And the project also supports several goals and policies of the general plan and is exempt from SEQA, project, uh, specific to the general rule exemption. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation for tonight. The operator is here and available for any questions. He has been operating for over seventeen years in two different cities, in Anaheim and Lake Forest, and is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, does the commission have any questions of Selena?
I do have a couple of questions here. How many parking spaces require for that particular facility of eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty, twelve foot?
Um, for, it's an existing restaurant building with, and the entire site has two hundred and forty-six spaces. The rate for a restaurant is eight parking spaces per every thousand square feet, so it's ninety-one parking spaces.
So do they have enough parking space that require?
There are two hundred and forty-six onsite, so the hotel and restaurant were entitled together to operate as a restaurant and hotel.
I believe they have a shared parking with the church next door to the dinner?
There are thirty-two stalls on the west side that are shared with, with the church as a result of the church needing additional parking to meet their standards.
So what the code would allow, how many people per square foot in that particular restaurant establishment?
For the restaurant establishment itself, the eleven thousand square foot building, occupancy based on the California Building Code, which has a, a pretty high calculation, would be in fi, in the five hundreds, five hundred and thirty-eight persons.
Five hundred and thirty-eight, so it's mean they, for security requirement, they have minimum five security guard on site?
If they were to have that, that full occupancy.
So it's mean if they have more than five hundred and thirty, um, people inside, that what happened? Because if the, for parties and, you know, for banquet and so on, do they, don't, they don't really go by the occupancy they go allow?
They may. So it's required that they post their occupancy within, inside, inside the building by code. And then the operator would be, when they're leasing or renting out the facilities, in charge of figuring out how many attendees are they actually having and making sure it's within that range. But I would encourage you to ask them how many they typically have on a regular basis because the building code doesn't usually allow for a lot more than.
So my, my last question, why did they go to type forty-one, why don't we go straight to forty, type forty-seven?
Again, the applicant could answer that. They don't have any existing alcohol CUPs on the site right now.
I see. Thank you.
Cynthia?
How many banquet rooms will they have?
So looking at the site plan here, this is the full banquet hall facility. So the main restaurant operations are in comparison are here. So it's a lot smaller, but in banquet facility operations, they would extend, open the room to have an additional room.
So if not, they, they'd be able to have, let's say, a wedding and a kinsenyet at the same time? They'd be able to have two?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, and what's the room occupancy?
So the, this would be split here, right where my cursor is, if, for the two rooms. I don't have it broken down for occupancy of each room. I only have the total, I think, which is the five thirty-eight for building.
So it comes total five thirty-eight. So five hundred, you're not gonna have five hundred cars, but the parking for the hotel then and the restaurant is shared, correct?
Yes, it is shared parking for the hotel and the restaurant.
How many rooms does the hotel have?
A hundred and thirty-one.
So it doesn't seem like, like where are they gonna park when they overflow? Because if the hotel is at capacity, let's say they are having a conference, and then they have a banquet, it doesn't seem like it would be sufficient.
There's two hundred and forty-six spaces on the site overall and a lot of the people that are coming to the banquet hall would come in, in shared cars as well. You know, family all together in one vehicle.
Okay, I, I'm still teetering on that. I personally am not convinced.
So let me ask you to build on what was just said. From the standpoint of when we entitled the hotel, how many parking spaces were required by code?
Two hundred and forty-six.
Two hundred and forty-six?
Mm-hmm.
For the hotel alone?
Oh, no, for the hotel alone. It was entitled at, with the hotel and the restaurant building, existing operations, so total two.
Hotel and restaurant was two hundred and forty-six?
Correct.
As a hotel and a restaurant?
Mm-hmm.
Split away the hotel. What's the hotel?
It's one parking space for every room and then ten.
Probably one hundred and ten or something, about one hundred and sixty spaces approximately. Roughly tops.
Okay, so a hundred and sixty spaces, so we know what the hotels was basically entitled to do at this point in time. And then the other two hundred, or the other hundred roughly, was considered the restaurant at this point in time?
Actually eighty-six.
Actually eighty-six according to Cynthia.
Right, and based on one, where the eight parking spaces.
It's ninety.
Have in the parking, as Lynn mentioned, they be parking for both uses immediately and together.
So now we have, we already have aside the hundred and sixty plu, plus spaces. That leaves us with a little less than a hundred, eighty-six. And, what?
It, to, to me, if I do the math, for instance, if you have a wedding and you invite a hundred people and they're mostly all couples, you're gonna have fifty cars minimum. And the capacity for those rooms are more than that. I just don't see, I mean, and there's always guests that show up that were unexpected. And then my other question was also, does the hotel itself have a bar?
No.
No.
No, so no bar and no restaurant?
There's no, there's no entertainment.
No, no meeting space either. It's just a hotel.
When this project, when this project was brought to us originally as a hotel and a separate restaurant, that's what was approved at that time, a hotel and a separate restaurant.
Correct.
What's changed is it's now a banquet hall instead of a restaurant. But it's still is acting as a restaurant to some extent. And then it's acting as a banquet hall on the other side.
Correct. Selena, as a restaurant, do they have the same number occupancy limit, five hundred and thirty-eight persons or more?
I, I don't know the occupancy of a restaurant, sorry.
If you look at the floor plan, it shows thirty-seven tables times six per table. That puts one hundred and twenty-two roughly amount of people you have in a banquet building that was all used at one time.
Two and?
Two twenty-two, I believe.
But we're talking, but?
Thirty-seven times six per, per table, two twenty-two.
Okay, but, and that was the number we kind of came to earlier, but what is, where did the five hundred number come from?
Five thirty-eight is the total restaurant plus banquet facility rooms.
So there's five hundred and thirty-eight people?
Right.
And that's all visitors, or is that staff, or is that?
That would be the maximum occupancy based on building code. So the parking and zoning or what the banquet facility may have table for?
Right.
Could be a significantly less number. But the building code is based on square footage, ingress and egress, and fire suppression.
Right.
Uh, calculates that it allows a maximum of certain number persons to occupy per square foot. So based on what they have, they can occupy up to five hundred and thirty-eight persons. But it doesn't necessarily mean that they would, they would have seats. Often when you go into restaurants, you'll see a maximum occupancy of a hundred people. And when you look around, they're probably set up for maybe seventy-five to fifty in terms of tables, but the occupancy is based on the space availability, so.
And to answer Nguyen's question, just the restaurant facility is a hundred and seventeen spa, uh, people for occupancy.
So even if we took half of it?
Yeah.
At five thirty-eight, we're at two hundred and nineteen people. And you have, well, two hundred and nineteen guests. We have eighty-six spots, half of two nineteen. I'm not a math whiz, but it doesn't, I don't think it would cover it.
Madam Vice Chair, you were talking about the parking?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure out if, at, I mean, at some point, the issue will become where the hotels look the hotel's at capacity and they're having a wedding next door, where are people going to go when it, when they don't have...
So, by parking standard, they comply with a go-to, it's hundred and forty-four spaces for the hotel, ninety-three for the restaurant, puts you at two thirty-seven, they have two forty-six on-site, so parking, they meet our requirements, they exceed our parking by one nine space.
If the hotel without the restaurant was a hundred and sixty?
No, that was, that was one per room, one thirty-one, plus one per ten, one basically ten rooms, so plus nine with thirteen, so one forty-four is the parking required.
That's the hotel.
That's the hotel.
And then...
Ninety-three spaces required for the eleven thousand...
For the restaurant?
Yes, divided by one twenty-five, one, eight per thousand, puts you at ninety-three.
Okay, so we got that, so we're looking at two hundred and thirty-seven is the number you got right now?
Right, and they have two forty-six on-site.
And that's what basically would have been entitled when we entitled this back a year.
That's correct, that was right now, that was the whole analysis back in, what, three years, what I think it was when the hotel came up.
So, then the other side of it is, is that we look at the hotel, we look at the fact that there's now going to be how many more people?
Well, ours is based upon per square foot, like I mentioned, eight per thousand, that's how we definitely park it, regardless of occupancy levels.
But what would the bank...
Totally separate code codes, health safety issue.
What would the banking, what would the banquet bring as far as additional parking?
Ninety-three, it's parked at the restaurant, parked, eight per thousand. Primary use of the restaurant is parked at the restaurant, parked, eight spaces per thousand, ninety-three spaces for this banquet, so...
Correct.
Ninety-three. You've got to assume people are going to, husband and wife, kids are all going to park with it, it's not one for one, it's three to one, four to ones, our experience, and multiple people per bar. And we have several banquet halls throughout the city, and we don't have, we never had parking planned out by any of them.
And where's the church located?
You've got one to the west and one to the east, directly on either side, kind of located in the property.
Somebody from one of the churches suggested that a wall be built to define the spaces between the now hotel banquet slash property and the church. What did staff think of that? Is that something that's feasible, that's doable, appropriate?
Well, we honestly received that letter an hour and a half ago, and we haven't had time to consume everything, to meet with the applicant, to meet with the churches, so we required them to have the time to kind of dissect this and kind of see what the best report is. We're going to look at all options, make everybody happy.
So, then should we be looking at giving you guys more time to...
But I think...
You just asked the questions tonight?
We need to get the questions, we need to get the questions on the table at this point in time.
I have a lot.
Well, shoot away.
Sorry. Okay, so parking was one of them, the wall was a question, the hotel, so because they have a restaurant, are they also going to be asking till midnight to serve alcohol Monday through Friday, I mean, Monday through Thursday?
They only operate until seven PM as a restaurant, Monday through Thursday.
Yep.
But again, sentimentally, they become highly successful, one of them until later, they have the right to do that, but our code, we can't, can't stop them. They can, anybody can operate till midnight by city law and by state law, it's a law governed, we need to come before you for that approval, that's already in our municipal code, and so that's locked in.
Okay.
We're just telling you what they, explain to us what they, what they're doing right now. They may go to nine o'clock, they do it at ten o'clock, you'll never hear from it, and neither will we.
Unless their issues begin to come up.
Once they go past midnight, then we come back before you, or open before, I believe, seven AM, or one of them before seven AM, so...
So, just, I'm going to, I'm just reading this thing, banquet facilities, Friday, Saturday, five PM to one AM, what do we consider for the rest of the week?
For banquet operations?
Yeah.
It's only going to be Friday, Saturday, and Sundays?
It's only going to be?
Five PM to one AM, yes, that's a condition of approval on the CUP.
Like, if the hotel wanted to book an event, it would not be available to them?
As currently written with the CUP, with the conditions of approval.
Okay, do we understand also, I mean, at this point in time, the hotel's been open for six months?
It's a year or so.
About a year?
Yeah, about a year.
I mean, do we understand, I mean, there's another set of statistics here that says if it's a Holiday Inn Express, it's usually for people that are coming into the city and doing business in the city and leaving on the weekend. Now you have a weekend situation where you have banquet and maybe a very empty hotel, I don't know, do we know what the patterns are today?
What we can tell you is that the hotel owner has been in contact with staff and with the applicant of the banquet facilities, they've been apartment this whole application process, they've been calling us for several months, the owner of the Holiday Inn, they said the banquet hall needs additional hours or additional days, I'm sure it's been conveyed to the applicant.
Okay, continue with the questions.
So, the outside of it, have there been conversations of the facade of the building to clean it up a little bit, because some of the windows look pretty worn down, and there's no greenery lighting at night, light up the area a little bit more, make it feel welcoming and warm?
Yes, so the tenant has looked at the windows and doors, they will replace, but they cannot get fixed or cleaned, and they will be adding solar powered lighting within the landscaping. They have tenant improvement plans in to, or will be submitting tenant improvement plans along with the, you know, interior walls and things that could be addressed with the windows and doors if they need replacement.
Any other questions of Selena at this point in time?
I do.
Go ahead, answer.
So, one of the few emails we received earlier today, they are asking about accountability in regards to the security, and so I just wanted to know how the city has been keeping this kind of applications accountable to keep security in here, and do we have the resources to do that?
So, entertainment permit is required to be renewed annually, and that is a requirement, a condition of approval of the banquet facility, so if for any reason the banquet facility was not in compliance with their CUP, it can be brought back to the planning commission for review, and it could also be revoked. Also, one other thing to note for the live entertainment permits is if there is an increase in twenty-five percent of the number of police incidents, they can also require an increase in the number of security guards on-site, the police department.
So, there's a yearly review for them, and they just bring the project back, who reviews?
It's administrative by staff, so it goes to our police department liaison within City Hall, and the fire department, and building and planning.
And they have reports, they go visit the sites during the year, or...
No, we run, we run a police call for service, we check up code enforcement to see what kind of activities are going on out there.
Got it, so it's mostly by what code enforcement has?
Correct. And if there's a call that happens at night, the police department gets involved in, and it gets relayed back to staff that there was an incident at, you know, Dewey's first street, you know, either music, noise, whatever it is, part of it, and then it gets committed back to staff, and we look at it from there.
Cynthia?
How are, how's it going to be determined that you can't hear the music twenty feet from outside the walls, is that correct? How is that going to be determined?
There's a decibel reader that you can use for noise in regards to taking noise measurements, same as what we have for other uses in our city.
So, it gets done before they actually open up, or...
It would be based on a complaint, right, if we receive, because someone can change the volume of the noise based on whoever the DJ is, so it'd be complaint driven.
And just out of curiosity, only because I recently had an experience and found hotels in our city, and most weddings and events, eleven, eleven-thirty, so I think they do it because fortunate, or unfortunate, that these types of situations, people tend to really celebrate and consume quite a bit of alcohol, and I think that being that this is a very high crime area at this time, doesn't mean it will stay that way, but it's, from reading the past, it, the numbers show that it's been high. Just putting it out there since we're still in talks, I'm comfortable with stopping alcohol since they have permission to go to midnight, that's what I'm comfortable with at this time. Thank you.
Any, Ken, any? Felix? All right, thank you, Selena.
Thank you.
Secretary, we received any written communication on this item?
We have, they're posted on our website, and there's a few on the dais as well.
Okay. We will now open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, and would the applicant like to speak? Please identify yourself to the commission.
Yes, good evening, my name is Oscar Seja Ramirez, and I'm the applicant, along with my partner, my brother. So, we've been in business for seventeen years, and you can check the record in Anaheim and Lake Forest with the police department, normally we never really had any incidents. Over the seventeen years, we had two incidents that has nothing to do with the banquet hall, so like I said, you're more than welcome to check the record with the Anaheim Police Department, and I can guarantee you, we haven't had any issues with that. I know there's a lot of questions about the parking lot, we need to, what I need to address is that this is a banquet facility, mainly it's family oriented, and I would say eighty percent of the people that comes in there, it's mainly family, it's not going to be like a nightclub where one, one car will show up with one or two people. Normally, our type of clientele will show up in a car, three, four, probably five people in a car, so it's not like it's going to be one car per person, so just so you guys know. Other than that, I don't know if you guys have any other questions or any concerns?
Any questions of the applicant at this time?
I don't know. How has your collaboration been with the two churches in that area?
How was, what, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. How has the collaboration worked between you and the churches in that area? Have you guys collaborated?
Well, you know what, we did approach the church that is on our east side, I was not aware there was a church on the other side, to be honest with you, but we were unable to reach out to the person that was in charge, the two times that we actually went to it, and mainly we went over there to introduce ourselves, and if they ever needed Afghan food, because they do, we do cook Afghan food too as well, so we just went over there to introduce ourselves and see if they ever needed our service as well, but like I said, we were not able to reach the main person in charge.
And then how has your parking with, with experience, has there been any overflow from the church in your location or from your location?
In the Anaheim location, actually, right next door to us, there was, there was a church that was there for a very long time, and we never had any issues with them. I, like I said, you're more, I can even give you the landlord's phone number to see, you know, they can, he can give a feedback, but I mean, we haven't had any issues with any of them.
Just for clarification, you said you've been in the banquet business for seventeen years?
We started right in front of the Anaheim Stadium, then we had to move out, and we moved to the Ceritos location, and now currently in Lake Forest.
I'm sorry, where was the last one?
Lake Forest.
Lake Forest.
Yeah, we've been there since January two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. So, you've been in different places, but this the first time in San...
In Santa Ana, yeah, I've never been through Santa Ana, this is the very first time.
Okay, well, you'll be experiencing. Ken, do you have any?
Yeah, I do. What is your business plan for this particular location? Because it seemed to me that with type banquet facility, a lot of them turn to wild party and a weekend, and things like that type thing, that's my great concern.
We, we have, we, it is, we believe in making sure that we have a safe environment to begin with. Like I said, this is mainly a family oriented event, we do have a lot of weddings, we do have a lot of family gatherings, birthday parties, but like I said, ninety percent of the people that comes in there is going to be family members, so we try to keep it safe for everybody, we do have control as far as the alcohol, we hand out two alcohol drinks per person, we don't hand out like, here's twenty, take them, come back for more, we do two at a time, and we try to keep it, like I say, as safe as possible. There's always either myself, my partner in there, or somebody as a manager who's always in charge of the place, and making sure that everything goes as safe as possible, because if this goes out of hand, it's not good for anybody, especially for me, so we try to keep it safe for everybody.
So, are you planning to apply for entertainment permit with the city after the security, your license?
Well, we are applying for entertainment as far as DJ and music, do we need any other, I'm not aware if we didn't need another one besides that one.
Entertainment permit is an administrative decision, which is you can, you know, apply directly by the office, but anyway, the, my other concern of the facility as well, why are you applying for type forty-seven instead of beginning, starting with type forty-one, with just beer and wine? Forty-seven, as you're fully aware, including, you know, spirit, you know, like heavy liquor?
I understand, you know what, it was just an idea that came up to us, to be honest with you, I think we're, we'll be okay if we do the forty-one, I mean, it was just an idea that we had, we wanted to do the upgrade more than anything, but I don't, I didn't think it was going to cause them any problems, I guess, but if you guys are okay with the forty-one, we're okay with the forty-one.
The thing is, it seemed to me, this is, I can see the writing on the wall, this be turned, become like a bar or a club, more than, you know, like mainly for wedding reception and things like that, that's my, my main concern.
Yeah, well, we're, we're not going to be a nightclub, that's to begin with, I mean, this is mainly for the, like I said, family events more than anything, and I do see your point, but that's not our objective at all.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, to Ken's point, and mind you, we're just trying to be thorough, the restaurant's a pretty good size, do you ever foresee having a DJ in the restaurant?
Doing, having a DJ doing the restaurant business hour? No, most likely what we'll have is background music, but as DJ during restaurant hours? No, that's not the idea.
Well, I mean, you look at me like it's an odd thing, but there's lots of restaurants that have live music?
Yeah.
Then karaoke, so...
I see what you mean.
We're just trying to be thorough, that if that's something you foresee, that it needs, it should be, you know, considered...
I don't, I don't think we have that in our plans.
Maybe that's what Ken was alluding to, that they might have entertainment in the restaurant?
That's right.
I mean, the only thing I can think of is background music and maybe a TV or two, that's pretty much it, but I don't, I don't see nothing else.
Just, just for clarification, the three items, the three items that we've got going here, one is the banquet facility, one is the after-hours, and the other one is the alcohol, and this applies to the restaurant and the banquet facility?
The beer and wine is for the restaurant and banquet facility?
Beer and wine, yes.
And then the after-hours is just for the banquet on...
Right, on the...
By the setting.
Right.
And the condition will use permanent?
For the banquet, for banquet hall. But the banquet hall, in essence, the banquet, I mean, you're supporting, you're running both operations?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
Restaurant and banquet.
Restaurant and banquet, so, you know, the fact is, you'll need an entertainment permit because of what you're doing with the banquet, but that will apply to the entire facility, they won't need a separate one for that.
Well, it's for the same business.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I think that's already there on that one. Okay, any other questions?
I do, the, if one business, can they operate with two different ABC license, both forty-one and forty-seven together? I believe there's only one license allowed.
Yep.
So, so if they do forty-seven, it means they can serve the hard liquor at the restaurant too, there's nothing to prevent them from doing that.
That's correct, but generally, the hard liquor would require that they secure an existing permit, because ABC generally does not issue, or has stricter requirements for type forty-seven, but it's a type forty-one beer and wine, it's a pretty standard license that they can issue to restaurants, banquet halls, but I do see your point, a lot of banquet halls also serve distilled spirits.
That's correct.
Okay.
But in any essence, if they ever choose to do that, they would have to come back and expand, generally, they would need to get a license first, and then they would apply for CUP, of the rights to the license.
Cynthia?
So, I don't know if I'm starting to get confused, so right now, it's just for beer and wine?
Correct.
No, 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 it's not. Today, beer and wine spirit.
Today, it's for forty-seven.
Correct.
It's a forty-seven.
And that can be served Monday through Sunday?
That is correct.
Right.
Okay, so the restaurant can serve forty, they have the forty-seven. That's why I'm asking, that's why I want to make sure. The permit is gonna be in effect for both places.
It's a blanketed thing, and even if someone has an event there and pays only for beer and wine, nothing precludes the guests to come into the restaurant to get a distilled drink.
No, the restaurant will not have, the restaurant will only be, it'll only be a forty-one.
It will be closed during the banquet?
The banquet is only gonna be Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays. During the week, we'll be open as a restaurant.
The restaurant's just Monday to Thursday.
This is where, I'm trying to clarify this. The license that's being asked for today is a forty-seven. That forty-seven applies to the restaurant as well as the banquet hall.
That's correct.
So, if it went to a forty-one, it still applies to, forty-one goes to the banquet in the restaurant. So, in other words, there's no separate thing where you can have a forty-seven on the restaurant and a forty-one over here. It's, it applies to the entire facility across the facility. So, so it's one license, one or the other license? I think the only thing that's being said is it's a little bit easier to start out with the forty-one and upgrade to a forty-seven down the line if they decide to do so.
No, the only reason why, and I understand why you're trying to clarify it, but sometimes if you sell a package to a family that's going to have an event, they might say, well, I can only afford to pay for this, because you would probably be more cost if you add the mixed drinks. So, that's why the package, even though they can serve it.
Well, every, every event is a little bit different and, you know, it's hard to determine, but every, it, it can vary. I mean, it. Some people come in there with a budget, some people don't care about the budget, so.
The restaurant is not open Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
The what? I'm sorry?
The restaurant?
The restaurant will not be open. If we do have, if we don't have any booking on the weekend, we'll open it as a restaurant. Because we wanna stay open in the business. We want clients to come and take a look at the place. So, if we don't have no booking during the weekend, it will be open as a restaurant.
Are you, so I noticed you have the, there's one in Anaheim, correct, and one in Lake Forest?
Yes.
Are you currently using those as well as banquets and restaurants or?
No, no, we're not. The one in Anaheim is in a, dead end street. There's nothing related to it. It's not in the main street like this one. This is like, again, First Street. The one, the one on Lake Forest is the same thing. It's in a dead end street. There's nothing related to it.
So, it just operates?
It's just a banquet room.
It just operates as a banquet room?
Yes.
Monday through Sunday type thing?
Monday through Sunday, but it's mainly Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay. So, this one, you're proposing to have like a restaurant and the banquet hall?
Yes, and it was, one of the things that we did see is that it's gonna, it's on the main street. Not only that, the hotel's like literally next door. People are gonna be staying there. They wanna go eat. Might as well. We're right there. And I know that we can benefit one from the other. They can benefit from us and we benefit from them.
Okay, and as far as changing, I know we, they talked about it a little bit, like landscaping and all that stuff to make it more inviting. Is that something that you've already had that process?
And the landscaping, what we're trying to do more than anything is illuminate, illumination more than anything. I mean, they did the landscaping back a couple, a year ago or so when they remodeled the whole outside. So, there's nothing really to it on the outside, except the illumination that we're trying to add to the landscaping and the, on First Street, which it's already something that we already thought about it and something that we wanna do, solar, not solar panel, but solar lights.
Right. And currently, right now, the building, it's not being used or?
It's vacant. It has been vacant for the longest time.
Okay, and, and you guys right now are in the process of trying to get it open and trying to get something going on there?
Yes, I mean, that's the whole purpose. We in the process of getting it open and obviously, that's why we're here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant at this point in time? Thank you. Did you wanna say something?
My name is Victor Seja. Just to let you guys know, we open to any suggestions. We are welcome to anything and we like to work with everybody. Our neighbors, whoever's gonna be our neighbors, in this case, the churches, we open to work with them and try to make it friendly and welcome to everyone. Been in business for this long time and we, we are, we have a lot of experience on everything pretty much and basically working with everybody else. So, we open suggestions and anything.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your input on that. Okay. At this point in time, we'll continue the public hearing and I have several speaker cards. When I call your name, please come up and you'll have three minutes to speak. And please state your name and address and what your position is on the, on the item that we're talking about. So, the first one I have is Brian Shin. Is she?
Hello. My name is Brian Shin and I'm a member of the Jesus Baptist L.A. Church. We're located on fifteen forty East First Street in Santa Ana and we are on the opposing side. So, our church has a wide range of programs and services that are open to all groups, you know, including women, young children and elders. Our church services are open every day throughout the week with the highest turnout, especially on the weekends, on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Our many church programs, you know, promote Christian values that strive to better the community around us and bringing people of many different backgrounds together. However, if the banquet hall, which is directly across from us, receives the permits to operate late into the night serving alcoholic beverages, we believe that this will seriously hinder and even harm the community that we're serving around our church. Our primary biggest concern is regarding the safety of our church members. Over the years, various members of our church have personally witnessed and experienced, you know, scenes of drug use, theft and violence around, around the location of our church. In this already high crime rate ridden area, we believe that the allowance of these permits will only exacerbate the crime issue and put many of our church members at a greater risk. Moreover, with the operating hours of the banquet hall and our church programs coinciding, especially on the weekend nights, we believe that our church will experience disturbances and obstructions during our services. This also increases the chances of our church members, many of whom are young children and women, to encounter, you know, potentially inebriated people from the banquet hall that can lead, or the restaurant, that can lead to serious accidents. Since there is no physical barrier between the banquet hall and our church. Also, the issue of the parking congestion comes up where, when we have, you know, services and events at our church, our parking lot is already near or at capacity and with the additional influx of people that will be coming into the banquet hall and, and the restaurant, will also further complicate that issue. So, we, you know, Jesus Baptist Church, we only want to continue spreading our Christian values around our community and we believe that the approval of these permits and the banquet hall will only, they'll not only hinder our pursuits in achieving our goal, but even possibly increase the potential risk in that, in the general area. So, we hope that the city can seriously reconsider their decision on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Sean Tu? Yeah, you're good. Thank you.
Thank you, the planning commissioner. My name is Sean, Sean Tu. I'm a board member of the Islamic Center of Santa Ana, right next to the proposed project. I can tell you firsthand that when we first purchased our church three years ago, this space was infested with homeless and drug users. So, I'm here, we are here to oppose the project, especially Cup twenty nineteen dash thirty-four, which is approval for the selling beer, wine and hard liquor. Also oppose the twenty nineteen dash thirty-five, which is extended to, from five PM to one PM, from five PM to one AM. So, with this combination of music, liquor, and I think this is really, really a recipe for disaster. As, as, as my colleagues mentioned earlier, this place is a high crime rate before and we, maybe we exacerbate the crime rate even further. In our center, we already experienced some harassment from the homeless and drug users. By approving the, the Cup twenty nineteen thirty-four and thirty-five, it's gonna exacerbate the problem further. So, we oppose the, the approve of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Oh, by the way, I have in my hand the petition signatures that we collect of all our church members and I will probably provide you as a, as an exhibition for your further investigation.
Are those in addition to what we've already received?
Yes, those have already been distributed and posted to our website.
And we collect two more sheets today, so.
Okay, well then, whatever you've added, please give it to the secretary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Ghazali Saleh?
Yes, sir. My name is Ghazali Saleh. I'm a.
Close to that, boy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, we are, same, same subject, we are opposed to the thing that, because we are operating as a church, as spiritual and, and to promote a better, you know, the community, but so to add more drug and then, and alcohol next to us, it would be very difficult. Between, our wall to the wall is less than fifteen feet. The wall to wall is less than fifteen, fifteen feet, exactly. So, it's gonna be very difficult if you reconsider this and we appreciate that so much. So, we appreciate what that, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ghazali. Abdul Malik?
Good evening, sir. My name is Abdul Malik and I'm the resident of Santa Ana for about eight years. And the purpose, the bar is there not too far from our mosque and as well as the church also. We are very simple person, honest. We go over there and pray. We pray five times a day and then mostly the weekends, lot of people come over there. So, I am just a ordinary person, which very much concerned about. The bar is opening over there and that will be disturbing. Just like the water and fire, they don't go together. So, there will be some kind of always disturbance. First Street is a very nice, beautiful street and here comes the bar. The bar itself save in the mind something. And everybody knows when you say the bar. If somebody said the church, something minds come automatically, what it means. So, my simple request is gentleman make some money, which is good idea. They can go to Los Angeles where they can make a lot of money and lot of things. But First Street is a very respectable street, sir. Or I'm just a ordinary person, nothing here, nothing there. It was my personal concern. Then I come over here to request this license must not be approved. Your honor, my request. I thank you so much. Have a nice evening, sir.
Thank you, Abdul. Next is Stephen Mendoza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Stephen Mendoza, Executive Director of the Community Development Agency and a resident of Santa Ana. I wanna urge the approval of this project tonight. I wanna tell you how much hard work has gone into bringing business into First Street. The Economic Development Department works tirelessly to bring businesses that apply for these applications and are now in front of you. We work very hard to eliminate blight by getting these vacant storefronts occupied. I'm not sure if you're aware how much work goes into it before they ever see you. But much work has gone in by the applicant and the staff in order to present this to you tonight. I also want to tell you that the first way to eliminate blight is to have an occupied building. To have someone that's responsible for that property. We haven't had that on First Street. This gets you there. I spend thousands of dollars every day trying to eliminate the blight related to the homeless population in this city, and I mean thousands. Hundreds of hours of overtime, hundreds of hours on outreach, hundred hours on cleanup and hundreds of hours on dumping fees every day. First Street is attractive because of the vacancies. You remove the vacancies, you eliminate the blight and you assist us of doing our job, and I would appreciate that assistance. A vacant building is a great way to attract more homeless. Keep it vacant longer and you'll get more homeless on this street. Thousands of dollars have been spent on homeless, like I said, every day. And I'm the lead in that, so I know. I sign the invoices. I know what we're paying. But to have this building occupied seven days a week will assist us in doing our job and create a business friendly environment for this city of Santa Ana. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there anybody else at this time that would like to speak on this item? Okay, if you would, please come down and fill out a card.
Can I, can I, can I present some evidence?
Okay, what, are you, do you want to speak or not?
Did he already speak?
I'm sorry, did you already speak?
He already spoke.
Yes.
Sorry, thank you. If you've already spoke, you can't speak again. You raising your hand back there. You'd like to come up and speak. Okay? Anybody else at this point in time that wants to speak? If not, this is our last speaker at this moment. Could you identify who you are and?
I will right now. My, my name is Sitlali Rivera and I'm a member of the California Central Baptist Church. I'm also a teacher there that, for the elementary students. I'm an active teacher. My son's here. And so, I wanna oppose to the, like the, right, what is it? The applicant on getting these permissions approved, because what does family, like events or, you know, have to do with, to do with distilled spirits? It's really not a good idea, because if I'm gonna be drinking, you know, how am I gonna be with my children at the same time? If that's what I pretty much cut the picture of, that they wanna, you know, portray saying they're family events. But what does family events have to do with distilled spirits, alcohol, beer, especially around that area? I understand that it'll bring light to the city, but I'm pretty sure there's other businesses that can be proposed. You know, there's a zoo across, I mean, the other side of the block. It could be like a retail store or something like that where it'd be more like not a controversial environment and that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. And would you fill out a card with the secretary, please?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, at this point in time, we will close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission. Anybody wanna have, make a discussion at this point? Okay, since, go ahead. Okay, let me start. Okay, just to, just to make some clarifications here, I think that for one, unfortunately, there was quite a bit of information that was given to the commission or to the planning department at the last minute. And I think that, albeit that was some good information and some helpful information, it was a lot of information that really we haven't had any time to go through or dissect and understand in detail. I also wanna kinda reiterate what Steve Mendoza just mentioned and that is, is that, you know, we have made, the city has made a concerted effort to put together a zoning, a zoning process for this area that we're talking about tonight. And there's been a lot of money spent in getting that zoning put together. And it's also something that the city is trying to clean up, not just that one little section between Grand and the Five, but First Street from the fifty-five through to downtown the city. We're trying to do things to clean up that entire corridor. And I also wanna say is that when we approved the hotel, we approved a hotel with a separate restaurant. So, I'm a little bit confused as to why all of a sudden this has become a, a large issue on the part of individuals, because it seems as though there was always some kind of establishment that was gonna be put in there from the beginning, which was. that was going to be put in there from the beginning, which was approved and entitled. So I'm curious as to why it was missed at this point in time. I don't think anything was changed because the restaurant would have had either a forty-one, a type forty-one, or a type forty-seven types, type permit. I think that we've got some questions still on the table. I think even from a staff presentation, there's some questions that we have to do. So cutting to the chase, I would just like to say that I'd like to continue this item for thirty days and let staff work through things. I think we have some issues where the applicant has not necessarily been able to engage with the church. I strongly suggest that the two churches do engage with the applicant because we need to make sure that there is some buy-in on the part of both parties. I think the applicant is willing to make some changes and modifications to the plans, but they need to be able to talk this through with the, with the surrounding community. And we understand that the surrounding community has some reasonable ideas and things that they'd like to see. So.
Second.
Okay, so my proposal is to continue this to, do we have a date for the next thirty days?
December ninth.
December ninth, so we'll continue this till December ninth. And staff will work with the applicant, staff will work with the two churches to see what we can do to come together on this thing. I do, I do want to just say that, you know, I think that some of the history has been challenging for that area of the city. It's been very challenging. But I think that, you know, I've seen since the hotels gone in there, since the affordable housing project across, next to the hotel has gone in, there's been a lot less homeless activity and things like that. And plus we, the city has knocked down buildings and we have a large development that's been approved. And I'm sure people understand, we're going to say this, that that development that's been approved is five hundred plus, six hundred plus units? Elon? Six hundred plus units. It's going to have restaurants, it's going to have bars, it's going to have entertainment, and that's going to be right there on First Avenue Two, on First Street. So, I mean, I think we've got to embrace what's hopefully going to change the fabric and the look of the, of that area. So we have the continuance on my part till December eighth. It's been seconded by Cynthia. September ninth, my bed.
Second.
You seconded, so any other discussion? Did Ken, when he walked out the door, say goodbye?
Goodbye.
Oh, okay. All right, so we have four people right now. All those in favor of continuing this until December ninth? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero with Ken Nguyen absent at this time. All right, thank you very much and we'll move on to staff comments.
Just quick few updates. We're currently working with a subcommittee of the city council in discussion regarding the update of the housing opportunity ordinance. This effort has been going on for almost a year. The city council, a few months back, appointed a subcommittee to work with staff to look at options for potentially either amending or, you know, leaving the ordinance the same. So we'll be coming back to the city council sometime this, late this year, most likely before the end of the calendar year to provide some feedback as to the committee's recommendation to the city council regarding the WHO. I know that while the WHO does not necessarily apply in terms of the planning process, but it does apply for new housing development and you will see the discussion of that for development projects that the project does apply to. Some of the discussion has been whether or not to potentially look at either enhancing or what to do with the WHO as well as what to do with the fee. But however, those are two separate issues and the council will be able to have some recommendation from the committee hopefully towards the end of the year. In addition, we are working with the HRC. There has been some concerns and comments in terms of looking at expanding the commission's role and responsibilities as well as areas where they would like to be able to address and then looking at some potential discussion regarding tree preservation, protection, historical neighborhood, significant protection. And we are looking at bringing back their comments and feedback to us that we had a workshop, probably about three weeks back now, three, four weeks back now, in beginning of the year, culminating in a memo that will be forwarding to the city council once the commission approve its content. Will be forwarding that to the city council for their consideration in terms of expanding the commission's role and potential authority. One of the impetus behind the discussion is that the commission's and the community sees quite a bit of historical or what is considered to be historical structures or building that gets modified, but under the current code, it doesn't apply because of the definition or the defining of historical structure and who, what qualifies. So that may have some potential for impacting some of the planning process as historical application and development project does go through both sometimes planning commission and HRC. In addition to that, we provided a couple gifts that you don't actually have to put on the Form 700, but they're still pretty nice gifts. One is a pen from the PBA agency. We use that to help communicate and advertise the planning and building agency. And then the one fifth card holder, that should come pretty handy as well. Since we won't be having a second meeting in November, I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to all the commissions. It's been great to work with you throughout this year. It's kind of, the year has gone by fast, let's put it that way. It doesn't seem like it's November, but yet it is. So happy Thanksgiving and I look forward to seeing you in December.
Okay, thank you.
I've got just two quick comments. Our last meeting is December ninth, so as last several years, we'll have a little reception for the commission and staff, five o'clock, beforehand. So keep prepared for an email with someone else. Sarah, that's our, just great help this commission about here. She'll get something out to remind you about, she'll go early, let's light, some light bigger food.
Do we need a type forty-seven permit?
Not after five thirty, five thirty-one.
I was going to call her a banquet coordinator, but I didn't want to get down that road.
I don't think that she does, but anyway, so look for an email for that. And then you've probably seen Selena, she's carrying a few extra pounds. She's due in about four weeks and this is our last meeting. She's going to be off, well, from the end of the month until, we're negotiating that. She thinks June, I'm saying January, one of the J months, she'll be back. So to get chances, wish her some warm wishes when you walk out of here today, so.
Is she still here?
Yeah, she's out there getting some contact information from the churches and moving forward, so.
Okay.
Yeah, she's her last day, the twenty-sixth, I believe, with us and then her, she's due in mid-December.
Okay.
Did you guys do a show for her?
We're doing one for her on the twenty-second of the month at four o'clock. If you want to drop in, we'll send the email to your brother about them dropping in and say hi.
Yeah.
If it's okay.
It's absolutely okay. I'm sure she would appreciate it. So it's Friday the twenty-second, is that right? Yeah, week, well, next week and Friday. That's right, that's coming so fast. Week and Friday, so yes, we'll have a little shop for it about four fifteen after the counter's closed. Everybody come up and kind of wish her well. That's it for me.
Ally? You got your shopping bag and your computer?
I'm great, thank you.
All right. Angie?
I will not be here on December ninth, so I, yeah, happy Thanksgiving, happy New Year. We'll see each other, we've done a lot together, so thank you everybody.
Okay.
After I should ask for the zapper. Or the Ruby's zapper, they're in March.
She's already thinking Valentine's.
Felix?
Yeah, just I guess happy Thanksgiving to everybody and hope everybody had a nice Veterans Day.
Cynthia? With a shooting finger?
No, I had surgery. Just thank you again for always helping us try to understand where things are going and what's happening with our projects. Just like Felix said, hope you all enjoyed your Veterans Day. I know a lot of us have family that served and I look forward for the email to partake. That's all, thank you. Oh, and happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Come on, Selena, you can.
Do you know what it is?
Come on, Selena.
Come on, come on.
It's a baby.
She's going to name her, name the baby Addie.
Oh. Oh, bada boom.
Sarah, keep that.
Bada boom.
The baby's going to come out responding only to one.
Yes, so this will be my last planning commission meeting before you guys. I'll be going out on leave at Thanksgiving. Baby's due date is December thirteenth and it is a girl and it's my first one, so. Nervous and excited at the same time, but I'll see you guys soon after that.
I said one of the J months, I say January.
Probably it will not be in January, possibly June. That you'll see me again.
Hey now, don't help her. Well, she's the best and a healthy.
Thank you. Thank you.
And a great gift for the holidays, so to speak.
Yes, I'm very excited.
Right. Well, enjoy. Thank you for all your help and work this year and putting up with Vince.
Oh, Vince said he's going to babysit. He'd take the midnight feeding.
But thank you, guys. It's been a great year.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. All right. A couple of things, I was going through business journals over the, over the week, weekend and one of the things I ran across was there was a whole series of, there was a whole article, set of articles on development in Orange County. And it covered, you know, Orange County, but it covered Anaheim, Santa Ana, Irvine, stuff like that. And one of the things that came up was the, the project between the old Xerox building and, and Caltrans, and that was in the journal as a project coming up. Do we know where that project really is?
So the developer submitted their plan for plan check in order to meet the deadline for the new building code updates. So they have submitted for plan check. They're finalizing the sequel litigation matter. The two parties are trying to work out a circulation pattern for the front of the building where they share an access driveway.
Right.
Just today, we received some final emails that basically establishes some, I would say, some final points on either side as to what they would, they would be doing and what they want to do. So it seems that the two develop, the two property owners are working together. Our goal is to hope to reach an agreement so that they can go through with the recording of what they agreed to and the project can move forward. Regardless, they have submitted for plan check, for building construction and building permit.
So the, so the other one was from the standpoint of supposed to have started, but it didn't. Where are we with Elon?
Elon came in. Elon came in for a plan check last week, actually.
Okay. Okay, so they're, they're both moving along. Okay, well, I mean, you know, like I said, it was, it was relatively detailed in what they did and I was, you know, kind of, they had various phases of it. And, you know, some of the projects were just, have been off our radar screen for a long time. And I know people are asking, when is, when is the Elks Club area going to be cleaned up? Because I think that's going to be another big contributor to that, that area. Okay, well, everybody, I hope safe and happy Thanksgiving and we'll be back on the ninth. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting till Monday, December ninth. Have a good weekend, have a good evening, have a good day.
Armiento would like to say something. He, he's a family friend.